I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please help call cell phones, files, certain meetings. I look for approval of the agenda.
Please to approve the agenda.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item five, update discussion consideration, anonymous complaint against law enforcement employee. And we have got the notice, the DA released the statement. And I just want to act on this as quick as possible, so Bert's going to give us a little update.
I'll just, first of all, I'll just give everybody a copy of the press release of the district attorney, released on Monday. What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, he released it yesterday.
It's on your, it's in the package as well.
So, oh, okay, I didn't, I didn't know that. I didn't know that it was in the package. But anyway, I just, and I tried, and when I sent it to Lynn and Roger and everything, and I know social media is a heck of a lot faster than I am. And quite honestly, the Monroe Times kind of got it earlier than everybody else, and it was released. So henceforth, they were ahead of the whole game. But basically, I just wanted to give you guys, everybody here, an update. I know a couple of weeks ago, we met in a closed session, and I pretty much laid the entire case out to you, to everybody, what happened, how it transpired. But just to recap everything, basically, this anonymous email was sent on January 16th to 43 different people. Immediately upon receiving that, they placed Jeff on restricted duties. Basically, he was still working his 40-hour week, coming into work, doing stuff, but he just wasn't out of control and dealing with the public. After that time, I requested, myself, the sheriff's department, and the Green County District Attorney, requested the city of Monroe to conduct an internal investigation, not an internal, but an external investigation into the criminal allegations, because there was two criminal allegations within the report. The anonymous email, immediately, as soon as they started doing that, they interviewed one key person who basically said that never happened, and she was, when the sexual assault was alleged to have happened, and she said, "No, that never happened. That's not the way it happened." Here's how what happened, happened. I was completely involved in it, 100% consensual, blah, 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 et cetera. This was substantiated by other witnesses that were at the party and everything like that. So immediately, we were able to determine that this thing was false. And then I had a couple other people, I had to interview on some policy and procedure-type violations, and I moved this thing along as fast as we could, because quite honestly, it was costing the village money. We had Bill Morgan involved, we were back staffing shifts, we were covering overtime, we were using our part timers, I was covering shifts, et cetera. So I wanted to move it as fast as we possibly could. I met with Bill Morgan, we went through everything, and on February 5th, I made the determination that he was cleared of everything, and I had a verbal from the district attorney in the city of Monroe saying that there was no truth to any of the things that they had investigated, and it was completely unfounded. So on February 5th, I met with Bill Morgan, we reviewed everything, when it was determined that he was coming back to work on the 6th, and I think that's when we had our meeting, when I told you guys on the 5th that he was coming back to work the next day. And that was also when the press release that you guys, the village board was briefed, this was all reviewed by the village attorney. I tried to keep it as transparent as I possibly could, given the sensitivity of everything. Needless to say, February 5th, we also swore on our new officer, so February 6th, Jeff was back to work, full duties, field training, the brand-new officer that we swore on the night before. So anyway, that's where we're at. As a result of that, the city of Monroe and myself, along with the Green County District Attorney, then said, "Okay, this is all false. Who's responsible for this?" And that's when the entire investigation went from going this way to completely off to the other way. And everybody was basically, I want to say upset, but because everything in there was false, all the people involved in the investigations, mine on the internal, theirs on the external, Monroe's on the external, and the district attorneys overseeing the whole thing said, "Somebody's got to be held accountable for this." So kind of as a team, we started to see who was it. One common thing in the complaint was, when we asked somebody, "Who do you think was responsible to this?", every point, pointed the finger back to one particular person. As a result of all the investigations, my investigations, the city of Monroe's investigation, the city of Monroe was able to determine that they had probable cause to seek a search warrant regarding two individuals, two individuals' houses, vehicles, hard drives, computers, cell phones, cell phone records, et cetera, et cetera. On March 14th, those were executed at two homes in the city of Monroe. All the computer stuff was seized and turned over to the Department of Justice, where now the computer forensic people are going through everything and looking up everything. I mean, you know, when you have computers and you have this, it always leaves a footprint, and they are currently going through all that. I believe that there's probably going to be enough information in there, based on the information I've received from Monroe and those involved in it, to probably charge somebody for multiple counts of defamation and falsifying a public publication when they sent it to 43 people. The district attorney says they kind of lost their whistleblower status, or whatever you will, trying to do the right thing when they sent it to 43 people. Had they sent it to, say, the village president and the district attorney and said, "Hey, you've got a problem with one of your cops," they probably might have been able to pull it off. You know, say, "Well, I was just trying to do the best thing for the community and the citizens." But they really overstepped that boundary when they sent it to 43 different people. And so as a result of that, the district attorney, now with the course of the investigation, the way it's going, is now looking at criminal charges, for sure for one, possibly for two. Quite honestly, I think the second person's more or less just caught up in it because of their relationship with the primary subject, suspect. But they're looking at, it'd probably be multiple counts, because not only was Jeff victimized by this thing, but there were three or four young ladies that were victimized, that had their name dragged through the mud. There was another cop in Manona that basically, all he did is put on Facebook and said, "Let's have a Tubi party", and he was wrapped up into it. And keep in mind, all this stuff was eight and 10 years ago. So, you know, we're moving forward on it. But the bottom line is why I wanted to brief you guys, and again, I probably told you all this and maybe a little bit more detail when we were in closed session. But at the end of the day, he's back to work, he's cleared, the district attorney's officially cleared him in the press release. Monroe Times still did an article on him, and for some reason, they had to bring up his personnel stuff and brought up more stuff from 2007, 2008, and I don't know what that reporter was trying to do. The State Journal also did a secondary article on it, which I thought was pretty good, clearing his name and now pointing the finger at the other things and how the entire investigation has flipped. So I wasn't very happy with them with the first article even published, but you can't change that now. But I was rather satisfied. They asked Jeff for an input on it, if he saw the article, he refused. And I talked to the reporter, the reporter was completely understanding why he wouldn't want to talk to the press. And I basically said, "Well, you really didn't do him any favors in your first article, and I think he's cautious on what he says, and he doesn't want to say something because he's involved in it." So he asked me to call you back, so I'm calling on his behalf, and we did that. So as I told the paper, I said, "It's an embarrassment to the department, the officers, and the village, and it's been a hardship. It really has. I mean, in fairness to you guys and the village." So quite honestly, I'm still finalizing all my report on it and trying to make the determination of what, if anything, even goes into his personnel file, because all this stuff is really a simple policy violation of maybe using poor judgment on one or two, basically one thing, but it's eight years ago. So I mean, you know, how do you go back and even do something, you know, for eight years ago? I mean, in the time, I mean, that was just when I started, or just before I started here. And over the eight years I've known Jeff, I've seen him grow up, I've seen him mature, I've seen him become more professional, I've recommended he get promoted to lieutenant. So, you know, quite honestly, I don't even know if it's even worth going through other than making a note that this whole thing blew up, and at the end, there was nothing to it, and that's the way it stays. And I will let you guys know about that at that point in time, but that's probably going to be a week or so down.
How does that impact his role as a police officer? I mean, does it make it more, his relationship with somebody is going to stop in the street? More, Bert, not, you know, traffic stop, more tendrous, or does it impact him at all as a...
It doesn't, it doesn't. The social media is really his biggest enemy, and that's social media, you know, crap, if you would, is what it is. You know what? I will tell you this, the community's been extremely supportive of him. Everybody I've talked to has been extremely supportive. I know as soon as this happened, and I went down and I had a conversation with the superintendent of schools and basically told her the nickel version of what happened, because I didn't want to, Jeff, we have a very good working relationship. Jeff is very well-liked by all the students in the school that he deals with, by the teachers, the principals, human services, everybody he deals with, and he didn't want to jeopardize anything with that. And as soon as we had this basic information, even prior to me coming to the village board on the 5th, I basically told Dr. Thayer that, just a fly, there's really not a whole lot to this, and I think it's going to take a whole different course of action here. And she was very glad to hear that and extremely, extremely supportive of Jeff. I know Jeff Eichelkraut, the principal, pulled him aside and pulled him into his office and closed the door, and even told him to support for Jeff and all that thing. And I think if anything, really, he needs some backing and support from the community, and maybe you guys just the village board, because, you know, it's kind of been basically hell for him to have that smeared in the paper the way it was. And, you know, everybody makes mistakes. You think back to some of the stupid things we all did when we were younger, and it is what it is. But to have them publicly aired in a forum like that is really totally unacceptable. And I think at the end of the day, I think somebody's going to pay the penalty for that. But like I said, if there's any support that you guys can certainly give for him, to him, or let him know, or talk to him, or, you know, whatever, I think he would really be appreciative of him.
Any real idea of why this person did that?
I do. And I don't remember what I told you guys on the 5th, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day, when it's all said and done, somebody thought, this person was a former part-time cop up in Dane County, and he got arrested for something down here with disorderly conduct. And this person thought Jeff called his former employer and said, "Nah, nah, poo-poo, your cop just got arrested for disorderly conduct." When the kid went to trial on his disorderly conduct charge in front of a judge, his due process, and was found guilty, he went ballistic, and he said something to the lieutenant in the courtroom, said, "If it wasn't for Sturven calling my boss, I never would have been here, and I never would have lost my job." And the lieutenant said, "I don't want to burst your bubble, but I called your boss, it wasn't Lieutenant Sturven." So at the end of the day, that's really what the whole thing comes down to, is that basic information. So that's kind of what started the whole thing, we believe. So that's that.
No, I just hope that Jeff and his family and the individuals that, like you said, got dropped through the mud, the innocent people, and that can push all this, really can put this behind them and move on.
Right.
You know, because there were some innocent people that shouldn't have ever been involved. I mean, it just...
Right. Exactly. In particular, like I said, number one, Jeff, but particularly some of these females, because they've gone on now with their lives and have children and have, you know, new significant others and so on and so forth, and that was it. So anyway, like I said, in fairness to you guys, I know you, you're in charge of the village, you're responsible for the operations. I just wanted to be upfront with you guys and let you know where everything stood, where everything stands, and where we're, you know, where we're going with everything. And I think down the road, like I said, we can look for maybe another chapter, and then we can close the whole thing and move forward with that. But, you know, that's it.
Well, it sounds like it was all handled very well.
Yeah.
It took a lot of time. I mean, I think, you know, Lynn's probably seen my paychecks for the last couple of weeks, where my hours are way up there, and, I mean, it has taken a lot of time and resources, and meeting with Bill Morgan and money spent on the whole thing, but at the end of the day, that's where we're at.
Do you know, when Jeff was medicated over this, did they put his picture in?
The State Journal, or the Cap Time, or State Journal, I'm sorry, did not. I haven't seen the Monroe Times yet. I don't know if, was it on there?
It seems like a little bit of skewed news when you, you know, when you put somebody's picture next to an article where they...
Right.
And then you don't.
Right.
They continue to associate that picture with whatever issue he's been considered guilty of. I wish that they would be another picture to... Yeah, otherwise, I mean, I feel sorry for him. He's going to drag this around for a while. It's not going to go away right away.
Well, and really, that's the scariest part of the whole thing, how a media outlet can take an anonymous, completely anonymous complaint that somebody alleges stuff, and, I mean, that could happen to you, that could happen to you, anyways, and with a picture.
Those pictures are powerful.
Right, right. All right. I thank you, everybody, for your time and support.
Still on this subject, does the board want to do something for Jeff?
Support of him?
Do you know, is there, is there going to be anything like in the Post Messenger? Or like, can we put this press release like on our village website, or...
I mean, probably.
Right. There are people that are like still out there talking about it as if like, we're employing a criminal.
I wonder if...
Yeah, you should see like the website with the article on it. It's awful. Everybody's comments are that like, everything in the email was true. I'm like, no, that's the exact opposite of what the article is saying.
What website were you looking at?
I can't, it was like the link to the Journal Sentinel. And we can't fix that, but like, we can get accurate information.
Bill Morgan's only...
Social media is the sewer of the internet, and we can't change that. Yeah, I think we ought to be like, we should.
Bill Morgan's only suggestion was to, you know, he could include something in the minutes at this point, supporting him and expressing gratitude for his hard work and that kind of thing. I don't think Bill was like, you know, too much maybe draw attention.
Draw attention more to it.
But, you know, that would make a lot of sense to include something.
Thank you for his service in the village, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, just kind of all he's done for...
Support.
Yeah, you can say that.
People on record are saying that we support him.
To provide their full support.
How would we do that?
And are grateful for his continued...
How would we do that?
Service to the village. Put it in the minutes. Put it in the minutes. And then I'm hoping, I'm hoping that that press release goes into the Post Messenger.
Well, who reads that anymore?
Some people do. Well, the way it is, I mean, it is kind of, actually, I should, I mean, it can just one dim color picture.
I mean, it's public, but no reason we couldn't put it on the village website, I suppose, right then, or...
We could put the press release on.
The press release.
It just, I've heard people go, "Oh, yeah, I know that guy. He's the one who..." And they look at the picture and they recite the information where, where as...
Maybe Jeff would put his picture in again.
And maybe he would, doesn't want this like on the website, I mean, I don't know. Like, he doesn't want to talk to the paper, which I don't blame him.
Well, I think we're doing it in respect to showing support for him.
So maybe like the blurb on the website could say something like, "On, at our March 19th board meeting, the village board unanimously expressed their support for Lieutenant Sturven, and thanked him for his service." You know, they're happy, or something, you know, that the district attorney and an external investigation has cleared him of all allegations from the January email. And then like just link the PDF or something.
Okay, I've heard a few different things.
I don't know. I don't know, that would like be, that way maybe then the focus isn't just on the press release. The focus is on like, the board saying, "We support." I don't know.
So with the first one, I had the board went on record to provide their support, and are grateful for his continued dedication to the village.
Sure. Yep, I think that's right.
And then with the press release there, what, just link to it, or link to the press release?
If somebody wants to see the press release, they can look at it.
What do people think about that idea?
Is that okay with everyone?
That's good.
Can we do that in the form of a motion?
No, I wouldn't, but we do that.
Presidential directive? And we have presidential directives.
But we might do check.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second?
No, there's a motion, sorry.
All in favor say aye. Uh, let's see, item six, are we done with item five? Is there more discussion on five? Okay. Item six, public appearance and citizen's comments. Mr. Marcus, something to say, or move on to approval of the consent agenda?
I'll motion to have all approved, the consent agenda. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, most curious. Item A, financial personnel. Item B, acceptance of resignation, deputy clerk treasure.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Deputy Clerk Treasure.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item B, consideration, our 1912 resignation with appreciation of Deputy Clerk's service.
On the backside of a resignation. Where is it? I know I saw it, and I know I read it, but...
It's towards the end of that page. That one got to here a little bit before, though.
He's after all these figures.
A little bit.
The budget numbers?
Oh, you're close.
The village budget.
How close am I, am I too warm? Am I getting warm, right?
You're warm, you have the string burning.
You're there.
I will make a motion to approve resolution 1912 in appreciation of our service, service to the village of McLarens.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item nine, public health public safety. Item B, discussion consideration, community report on a full special assessment for the 2019 street project.
This is the updated spreadsheet. Oh, did they put Rosalie on?
Is there a change?
A very slight change to Rosie's users, but a larger change to Jeff Allers. But say that again, but a what to the last?
Oh.
A larger change to Jeff's.
And is that in result of the question about the... So at the public hearing, there was discussion about whether or not, at some point, a road had been deeded in between Rosies and...
And those apartments.
And Jeff Allertown.
And it wasn't on the, the numbers weren't on the abstract that this, so these two, you'll notice, are different. And so it was, it was asked at the hearing that they call and see it existed, and it does.
What was our initial... Okay, so Rosies, I wrote it down, switched from 165 to 164.3, so her overall assessment was reduced 12, $12. Jeff Allers switched from 176.4 to 143.4 feet, so his, he dropped approximately $600.
So it's actually more on his lot, that easement.
Those were the only two objections. There weren't really, I mean, that many people there. I've seen it, I've seen more before.
It was an interesting hearing.
Yeah.
There was a wide range of questions.
Yeah.
I couldn't even keep up with taking notes. I was like...
Yeah, and you can see a list of all...
How would you want me to list your questions?
I saw a couple, no, I saw one in particular, really stupid question.
Well, there were, there were many questions that I didn't probably capture completely. And I felt, I was literally like, page. It was, I thought the discussion was good, though, like, because it gets good information.
Back to the public, as well as us back. I think...
And Pat is, he knows...
Pat, yeah. I think I said, "Okay, so that concludes the comments, and we started up again." "Okay, that", and then we started up again. So people were thinking, you know, we thought when they were done, but then they continued on, so. But that was good. It was probably the best.
Yeah, it was good for me to read through, too. I'm not on the committee and not as familiar.
Yeah. People had good questions, you know. And rightfully so.
Right. I mean, we don't do a project like this very often.
It's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money for them, for them as well, yeah. I think that's probably what you were saying, but, and they deserve it.
So is this discussion consideration item would be to approve the...
The engineer's report.
amended engineer's report that we received.
So I'll make a motion to approve the engineer's report on our full special assessments for the third annual project 2015. Do you amend it?
Remanded report?
Yeah.
The amended report.
And amended assessment, yeah.
I don't know if I get to speak now, but I appreciate the fixed mystery.
Any more discussion? One discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I appreciate having you speak.
See, and then the next page is the, like, the final version of the two bids we had for...
We, our committee voters, go with the new race voters, which are $94, $97, yes, something like that. Anyway, I don't recall, do you, how much it would cost traditionally to get it outfitted for the road? What, did he say how much it was going to cost? I mean, they have, they have to strip it down and add in all the, you know, an extra...
I can't remember. I do remember, though, like, on the $95 more to go here, that it was basically like one service call of having to drive a police car to Hartford and have another police car go pick the person up to bring them here, and then leave the car there, and then take one service call alone... to Hartford, and have another police car go, yeah, pick the person up to bring them here, and then leave the car there, and then take, one service call alone, would end up costing more than the difference between the two cars.
And they couldn't say enough about the Glares Motors servicing them, and they just.
I think they said that the last time we go to Squat Car.
And they have, I, I put it in the notes, but the fund in order to, the fund to pay for this purchase has well more than this amount.
Okay.
There's that in it, is that correct, Lynn?
Yes.
It was maybe forty-eight or forty-seven thousand, so there's enough for the, the purchase of the car.
It's covered by the budget.
And it's.
It's in there, but they have a, they have a fund specifically to buy this car.
Yeah.
And they have more, or more by car, and it has more than this amount in.
But, but, what fund, I mean, it's.
It's falling a.
Yeah, it's covered by the budget.
Yes, covered by.
I mean, we have a fund.
We, yes.
Yes, we.
Right.
And they, the village has a fund that's designated for slots.
Yeah, they're the police, yeah.
And this is routine.
Part of our budget.
Right.
Right.
Part of our budget.
Look at what I know.
And this is routine, they switch out every two years, forty-five thousand on their existing car, and I'll take that up to the, um, auction.
South and surplus.
Yeah, so it's auction, and so they'll get some money for that as well, which I would think forty-five thousand isn't really, you know, totally to deal with it, so.
So each car doesn't get swapped out every two, a new car?
Right, a new car swapped out every, for a new car, not every two years, except for one year, they kept one longer.
So the car might be like nine years old.
Yeah.
This one before it gets swapped.
But it's a rotational.
When you, when you, proper vehicles.
Yeah.
And question on this, though, after we approve this, on the cars.
Probably talk about now, if you want.
No, it's not about, it's not about the purchase, it's about.
Okay.
I think that we approved the purchase of, um, the police squad car from the Glares Motors, second.
Any more discussion? Here is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
None. So, I don't know, sometime within the past month or so, it did come up at one of our meetings, about, uh, the, the, uh, taking one of the old squad cars, the village uses it, and somebody said, "Do we still have one?" And I did, I did see one parked around here somewhere, so what is the process on that? Do we have a set process, or is it, created as worth nothing?
I think what will end up happening is, probably the oldest vehicle, unless they, however they wanna do it, if they wanna take the one they're retiring, but one of them will probably end up going up to Wisconsin Surplus and being auctioned off.
Okay.
Now, there's one that's sitting back here, I think is a Chevy, and we haven't had a Chevy for quite a few years, so that's quite old, but that's around for, if they need to go to training or something, instead of taking a regular squad car, they just take that.
So, who, who, is it for, uh, all village use, or, uh?
Uh, I don't know, we used to have a car down at the, that the village employees could use down at the shop, but then, 'cause, um, Mr. Dancer would use it if he'd have to do something with the wastewater treatment plant, well, then we bought him a pickup truck, we wanted four-wheel-drive pickup trucks, and we bought him a four-wheel-drive pickup truck that stays down at the wastewater treatment plant. So there is no vehicle back to the old shop anymore, 'cause Mike would have to take his personal vehicle and drive from the wastewater treatment plant to the shop to get a vehicle to go wherever he had to go. And he wasn't happy doing that, so we, uh, we wanted four-wheel-drive pickup truck. So there's nothing, the only car that's available is the one with the police department, now whether the police department wants anybody to use that, other than them, I don't know.
So we don't have?
Any thoughts on that, do you know?
I, I think maybe Public Works employees occasionally use it if they're going to training, I know the last time that it came up among staff, it was kind of a, if you feel, you know, if you're going to training somewhere, or a conference, and you feel comfortable using that vehicle, and it's available, but I, I've never used it, um, and I don't know that Public Works employees use it very much.
'Cause our ownership and maintenance of it.
Was, is it worth?
Just, if we have any one, or would be better off paying, uh, the employee, uh, the standard, um.
'Cause don't we pay insurance on it, then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's not money, 'cause we've got, we must have a.
Fleet, yeah.
You know, you know, by unit, a pretty cheap policy, but still, um, there's maintenance.
Why don't we, why don't we do this, uh, put it on a, a Public Works, uh, agenda, and have it looked at?
Yeah.
Then they can bring.
New cost, new cost, analysis on it.
Well, we could also invite the work, have someone just give a summary of how they use it in their department, if at all.
Have a department analysis.
Yeah, and that, and that we can have that at the meeting, unless we want them to attend, and.
Ask Jeffrey Verter to come in and see how much they use it, and, does anybody else ever use it, I really don't know. I honestly do not know.
I think Scott was here, I had seen occasionally driving it, but, um.
But he also could have taken.
A pickup truck. Yeah, they don't need a round town, we've got plenty of vehicles.
I just wonder if the police department uses it, or if they'd rather take their own vehicle.
I don't.
I guess there's something, that's a good question, well, let's do it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, item C, discussion consideration, scheduled public hearing on ordinance nineteen zero one, parking prohibited zones.
Is getting that at the next one?
Everybody know what those are about?
Mm-hmm.
The parking.
I think we all, you'd have to schedule it for April sixteen, by the time I do the appropriate notice, and then, oh, okay, April sixteen, yeah. So, motion? I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing on ordinance nineteen oh one, prohibited parking zones for April sixteen.
Second.
Any more discussion? Here is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, say aye. Item ten, full board business, A, discussion consideration policy for appointment of vacant trustee position. Anybody's got a copy of this that, uh, Mr. Morgan put together? I guess the one thing I would like to clarify, do you, if you put this ordinance into effect, do you want it to also pertain to the committees that need to be filled every year? Or just the, just the trustee?
I would, I would prefer to see it just as trustee village.
Okay.
That would be.
Elected, elected, uh, village office.
Okay.
Don't you think that would be, uh, times, you'd never get.
You know how much time I put into that every year?
That would be.
And phone calls, and?
Yeah, that would.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, so.
When I talked to Bill Morgan, he prepared it, meaning for it to read any village office, so he can, you know.
Well, he, he's mentioned, I can't find it again, I had it once. Now, a little more, let's see, uh.
I, um, that's why in that, like, pair, the first, or you know, like, paragraph one, A one, it has the word elective before the list of things.
Right.
So I'm guessing that it only pertains to positions that are elective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When I asked him of that, that wasn't really how he.
Oh.
Read it, but he said, "But I left it fairly broad, so that you are able to do what you want."
Well, then I would change it to say vacancies in any elective village office.
Or elected.
But he does say, or, on other boards.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would say then you strike, then strike.
Strike that out.
Can just say?
Well, striking other boards' additional committees of the village. Well, shall be made by the village board, or, let's see.
Vacancies in any elective village board office?
Vacancies in any elective village office shall be made by the village board, strike.
From like, the word weather, all the way to the word shall.
Weather.
It's offset by commas, the whole piece where I remove.
Like, I don't think, I don't think you need anything from there, from here.
Right.
I don't think you need any of this, the third line, I think, can all go, and the word village in the last stroke.
You're right, that's what it would be, for you to teach our children.
Hey, please do that.
But number two, then, um, takes care of.
Then I, I don't know about number two, though.
Well, it, that covers, that covers the other things, in that, then it just says that if there's a vacancy there, it's the same procedure as the original appointment, which.
Right, would go back to Roger and that, right?
Yeah.
Right.
That's like talking about not village board.
Approved by us, but Roger fills the slots and, and, yeah, so that would make sense.
So we're leaving two alone?
I think two can say, 'cause that, that leaves.
Clarifies.
And then B, leaves us the choice to use statutory.
Right.
Uh, election process, if it, if it fits the timeline, which, I don't, still don't know if that's gonna change.
Yeah, I don't know if that's gonna change either.
Either way, I guess it doesn't matter, um, and then, you know, the two, uh, two, three, and, and, yeah, yeah. Those are the things that I was most interested in, uh, making sure that we have a, a full discussion as a board, uh, also, prior to that, solicitation of.
Names.
Of names, and, uh, you know, and then appropriate discussion after we have that.
Depending on state law, you know.
Yeah, so. So.
May interview candidates, applicants, if it chooses, so.
Yeah, it has may, and there are not the.
Yeah, it's pretty much against us, though.
Don't have to, but, yeah.
And we are the ones that should be.
Yeah.
Deciding this, not, you know, because we're, we've been elected, so we should choose, the representatives.
Yeah, I agree. So, what I'd like to do is just kind of review Lynn, possible, the steps, to make sure that this is covered, the steps we would go through right now to fill the vacancies after this election. So, uh, we would have write-ins, and then we would total those write-ins, correct? Or, or whoever written in, and then from there, we solicit all the member, all the, no, we're making a watch.
If there's enough elected ones, then we don't do nothing.
We're talking about replacing Sean's seat on the board.
Oh, I see.
A vacant seat that is.
I see, I see, okay, okay, so we, all right, why am I so, yeah, all right, so the election is the election. Is that already replaced, yeah.
This would only have to be applied after, for an additional spot beyond Sean's after the election, if there aren't enough people who accept.
Right.
Spots that were written in.
Right.
So.
So it's actually written as.
And that can happen, too.
So in terms of this.
It's actually written as filling vacancies.
I knew that, I just, I guess I was, my question is.
Board committee vacancies under the village code.
I don't know, someplace I've actually written this.
Do we have a timeframe, then, uh, from the times, should we, or from a time?
We do have one in here, I think.
Someone designs to a time when we can start soliciting, is it immediate?
Well, two weeks.
But that's, this is for the newspaper, two weeks.
Well, for, for a couple of times.
Yeah, yeah.
We would have to decide a.
The board will solicit, the board will solicit names of interested parties by reasonable means, including, uh, but not limited to, of course, uh, for a period of, two weeks.
Soliciting names of attorneys?
So we'd have to initiate this policy at the meeting to get a knowing.
But there's no timeframe, or when we can start?
No. And I think that's fine, too.
You see, one, and I'm reading here, number three, so to individual or group is increased as a name for consideration to village board, would you want the other one to be, or to the village administrator? I don't know why that would come to the perctor, there is going to be a administrator.
Yeah.
Well, maybe he was thinking, you don't have one right now, so we're gonna put Lynn on.
Well, you might as well put it in history, if you think.
Unless you, unless you really don't want it, we could put both, but, I mean, just to.
But what happens if we don't have an administrator?
What if we say, or to the village clerk treasurer, or?
It's good as default to the clerk treasurer.
Can we just put or administrator, or village administrator?
So administrator, or clerk treasurer. And then I have a question about names for consideration to village board, are we looking at, I mean, I think it would be difficult to submit to the village board as a whole, unless they sent it in, or what if someone, gives it to a village board member, and we put village board member, village board, any opportunity that they can to solicit it?
I think they should formally.
Yeah. Okay.
Submit to the village board, or to the clerk treasurer.
I mean, it gets cluttered if you have too many people.
Yeah, that's what I, so we'll clarify that.
You know, it's an important procedure, I, you know, just, I, I think you should stop somebody at the street and say, hey, I like this.
Stop us at my house or something.
Yeah. Right.
If there are not, not anyone interested in that, then they should probably sit here.
So if someone is interested in the position, emails Petra, Petra brings that to the board, correct, and then we.
I would, I would tell them to, um, to give it to the entire board.
Exactly.
Save it, that's our process.
Yeah.
Sounds like a large accent, I don't know.
I like it, yeah.
I think they'll, I don't know where he stole this, but I think, and I hope he didn't charge us too.
And see, it said public hearing here, but it's, it doesn't need a public hearing, I don't know if you want to approve it tonight, or do you want me to make those changes, bring a clear copy to the next meeting, and do it at that point?
Why don't we do that?
Yeah, okay.
But that way we know it's.
How it reads.
Yeah.
So that that must have been motioned that way, if it's a consideration item here?
We could, we could look to the next meeting.
To make a motion.
We have to make a motion, yeah, we do have to.
Yeah.
Then I would make a motion to ask Lynn to make the changes that we discussed, um, to the policy for appointment of a vacant trustee position, and bring it back to our next village board meeting, designate for.
For a vote.
For a vote, yeah, for consideration.
But this is a, oh, excuse me, just to clarify, so, when we originally discussed this, and, and, I don't know if that's important, but I just wanna clarify it. Bill originally said, "Well, you could probably do it with a resolution," but I see this as an ordinance.
I think he thought that it is that.
And probably second, had second thoughts.
Because.
I think it should be an ordinance.
And this is, this is an ordinance, right here, in this section forty-two point six, and it is an ordinance, so he's.
Mending that, okay, yep. I think that's why it's gonna.
I'll second you.
Any more discussion? Here is none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All in favor, say aye. Item eleven, residents' report, no, after the boys won the basketball tournament, I bought a trophy home, I called Lynn Monday morning, I said, "I think we need to do something to recognize the basketball team," so she put the, no, I'm not.
Some of those were going to be sold.
Could.
And I will fix the title, and, uh, whatever.
There, there's two boys spelled, names spelled wrong, that I know of.
Jared Mark.
So Trevor Gassman is T R E, the O R.
Okay, oh, Trevor, yeah, of course.
T R E instead of A.
And then, in Martenson, there's an N and an S missing in Jared. I'm, I can't tell you for sure on the others.
I'll go back and double check, I had gotten an email.
Okay.
I only left out the A in Steigenpauler.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I had to type that twice, too, and the first time I knew I got, oh, the, um, first one.
We all know what we're reading, so we, you know, we don't even.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And obviously, I was doing any other things, busy.
Yeah, I had sent Lynn under pressure that day, and we're gonna, we'll put it on a, lavender head, and then we'll, did you order the black already?
Yeah, it came, actually, it'll be a black background, and then it just has a clear glass over the top of it.
Oh, great.
I guess, how would you like us to present that to them, here at a board meeting, or out to the school, or? I guess, how would you like us to present that to them, here at a board meeting, or out to the school, or?
Oh, do you want to do it before awards night?
That'd be great.
You do, if, the awards ceremony.
First, like, Wednesday in May, all the seniors that would be there.
Everybody.
Every, all.
When, you know, when is that?
It's in May.
Or the athletic week, they have an athletic week. Where would you get more?
We're including teachers, coaches, students, I like that, you know, we're really recognizing the school as well.
We got, what do you think?
So, yeah, maybe ask, like, what he thinks, Jeff, I would call, and see whether he would.
Yeah, see if, when he thinks, or if they have.
They might be, maybe they're having another assembly, and all the students and staff will be in the gym.
Yeah.
I think that's better than like, taking it to a school board meeting, that's not be there.
Yeah.
So you don't have to work.
I think you're right.
You know, but.
Yeah, I, I, no, I wasn't deliberately talking about a board meeting.
So actually, there would be like, a few options, Travis will have a, probably soon, they'll have a, um, a boys' basketball, like, a dinner thing at night, maybe like, next Sunday, or, maybe even. Otherwise, then, in May, they'll have a school-wide awards ceremony.
Yeah, check with Jeff, like, the show, he can help Travis, other interested parties, I don't think it matters to us.
I can email, do you want me to ask Jeff?
Sure.
And then get back to him?
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then I would move that we adopt the proclamation to actually have a boys' basketball championship.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, any more business? Oh, there's a thank you here from PAA. And, and, help us, what a job they did.
Yeah.
I liked your family, Chuck, and we got done on Saturday, you shook your hand, felt they did an excellent job.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, we're very, very much more than I expected.
Yeah, very streamlined.
But it was all.
They got the connections.
It was all, it seemed to have a personal feeling to it, it wasn't, uh, incorporated, cold blooded.
Yeah, very much looking at all senses and all ways, yeah.
Yeah.
Needs and candidates in there.
I was impressed with the thank you from the.
Oh, me too.
From Alex?
Yeah.
Yes.
Very impressed with that.
Yeah, well, he was unanimously, unanimously our second choice, you know? And I think he'll do good wherever he lands, I kind of, in his interview, I mean, when he talked to me on Friday night, I really got the feeling like he was interrogating me, and he is like, chop, 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 and that's kind of what I got through the interview a little bit too, but, um, so, I'm sure he'll find a place to land, I don't know if he's applied any place, you know, like, maybe cross planes, you know?
Finally qualified, and he's got a lot of experience, that, uh.
Yeah, he would have been, he would have been fine here too, I think.
More, more experience made than coming to the test, considering the size of the municipality he works in.
Yeah. Well.
He'll be, he'll be fine.
He wants to get back to Wisconsin, so, you know, that was, that was the same with Brian, that was a contributing factor, you know?
Who doesn't want to get back to Wisconsin?
Exactly, and new letters too.
Well.
Okay.
A journalist, we're leaving.
We are a journalist.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.